I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no proclamations this evening. We do have a presentation, and we'll turn to Mr. Coulson, the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like at this time to bring to the podium Whitney Dameron, the city's lobbyist, to provide an update, an overview on the legislative session, which is nearing completion. Mr. Dameron?
Mr. Dameron.
Thank you much, Mayor, city manager, who's ever the optimist if he says the legislative session is nearing the end, but we'll see. There were meetings late today between the House and Senate Tax Conference Committee and the Budget or Ways and Means Appropriations Committees, and some exchange proposals between the House and the Senate chambers. Remains to be seen whether they'll be taken seriously or not. Tax right now is probably the bigger issue, and that meets again tomorrow at 9:30 in the morning, and we'll see what the House thinks of the Senate's latest proposal. They're still significantly far apart. You may recall or have seen in the news that the House has staked out a position where they do not favor continuing the six-tenths of a cent sales tax that's due to sunset June 30, 2013, that was implemented in 2010 as part of a comprehensive budget bill and to fund the transportation program adopted then. The governor and the Senate has proposed continuing that six-tenth sales tax in perpetuity and using that to continue to buy down state income tax going forward. House proposed to meet in the middle, to essentially roll back three tenths and keep the state sales tax rate at 6 percent. Senate countered back today by agreeing to go down from 6.3 to 6.25. So it was not a big move on behalf of the Senate, and so we'll see what the House really has to say about that in the morning. Some of the issues that we have been tracking, and probably the biggest issue that we've discussed, there's not been a lot of movement since we came in towards the end of the regular session, and what's happened during the veto session. One thing that has happened this year is leadership has tried to stick with the deadlines on bills, has tried to prevent a lot of conference committees meeting, certainly during the veto session, and continuing to run bills out. There are a few of those that are trickling out, but most of that's been shut down. Also leads to some frustration and anxiety for House and Senate members because if they're not on those key committees, appropriations and Ways and Means and Tax, which by and large aren't meeting, but they're not doing anything. So they're coming in, meeting for 30 minutes or an hour, and then they're done for the day, and there's been a lot of that, and it's been particularly frustrating for about the 50 or so freshmen in the House. The big financial issue that cities and counties were concerned with this year has been the machinery and equipment issue. That issue was effectively dead towards the end of the regular session. It remains in that position. The parties have not really had substantive talks since then. There's not an interest in trying to put that forward. The House has indicated they will not go on to general orders, which means debate the bill. It has not passed either chamber, so it's not subject to going into a House-Senate Tax Conference Committee. One entity who was involved with the coalition, Ash Grove Cement, has been in the State House quite a bit during the veto session, shopping their own language, which would really just apply to cement companies. And the members of the overall coalition aren't really happy with that either, and so that has not gained a lot of traction. That issue carries forth probably to 2014, and maybe comes back, maybe goes away, just depending upon what happens with those kinds of taxpayers between now and then in regard to their assessment and whether they come back to Topeka with complaints about the way they're treated by local county treasurers and county commissions. The local property tax cap spending lid issue that was around came out of the House Tax Committee. Cities and counties were concerned at the way the bill was drafted, said it could possibly be interpreted as putting a spending cap on local units of government. It says that you would have to have a specific vote if you're going to make use of an increase in valuation as opposed to reducing a mill levy to equal the same amount of revenue that you had obtained in the previous year. That bill was amended on the floor of the House to not require that additional vote by a governing body if the rate of increase was equal to or less than the Consumer Price Index from the previous year. Significantly watered down, and quite frankly, at the meeting that I had with the league and the counties last Thursday, they said it's better than current law, and they actually would encourage it being included in a conference committee if they so chose to do that. But whether they put that component into a tax bill remains to be seen, but it is conferenceable because it has passed the House. But it does not include anything that looks like a spending lid or a tax lid. We had talked earlier about House Bill 2069, local wage and benefit mandate. That issue was essentially cleaned up to protect the interest of cities and counties in regard to economic development incentive programs. I believe I read in the paper earlier this week, there was some issue in regard to Target Distribution Center and their hiring practices, which was exactly the issue that we raised in front of the House Commerce Economic Development and Labor Economic Development Labor Committee about those kinds of incentive programs that cities and counties often use to bring businesses to their community. That bill was subsequently amended on the Senate side to include some language relating to prevailing wage, which impacted unified government of Windup County, Kansas City, Kansas. But that bill was adopted with that language in it, signed into law earlier this year. Miscellaneous issues that have been out there, that have been in the news a lot, firearms is an issue. Municipalities not including schools will be required, based upon language in 2052, to adopt a security program for public buildings to either allow for the concealed carry inside those buildings or protect the public. Protect the public means controlled access, security, metal detectors, and et cetera, yet to be defined as administered and determined by the Office of the Attorney General. There is an ability for a four-year moratorium for municipalities to be able to implement those kinds of security measures. The issue could be revisited by the legislature after four years, but it is not automatically continued through an action of the Attorney General. It would take subsequent legislation. House Bill 2249, I don't know that we've discussed it in front of the council. We have discussed it in the city manager's office and some other representatives of the city. Has to do with construction projects located within 500 feet of an historic property, inside the city limits or 1,000 feet in an unincorporated area. That issue came out of Chanute, Kansas, legislator named Ed Bedeau. The argument became in the legislative process, there was a statewide moratorium of any projects located within that 500 or 1,000 feet without providing notice and subject to hearings as to whether the new proposal would be, if your project will directly impact an historic project based upon being on a federal register or state register, would you have to have that kind of a notice or a sign-off? The debate became, can local units of government adopt their own standards in this regard, or do we need a state, one-size-fits-all, in probably one of the rare instances where the legislature has deemed to allow for local control. They essentially passed that legislation and left it back to local units of government if they want to adopt certain standards in regard to construction or projects within close proximity to historic properties. An issue that was not on the city's agenda, but I think is of some interest, has to do with the serving of liquor by certain nonprofits. We've got Art Walk in Topeka. Noto has wanted to, certain businesses have wanted to provide beer, wine, or spirits for free of charge to their patrons who come to those kinds of functions. There's been kind of a legislative fix that has been maneuvered through the process that's likely to be concurred to in the House tomorrow. It's been passed by the Senate, and it would allow for those kinds of programs if approved by ordinance or resolution by a city or county. So once again, control remains at the local level if they want to allow those kinds of things at an unlicensed establishment, meaning not a restaurant or drinking establishment. No legislation was adopted in regard to changing municipal elections, whether it be partisan or moving them to even-numbered years, spring or fall. Legislation we talked about earlier this year in regard to blighted property that was proposed by Stan Frounfelder did not advance out of the Senate. No hearings were held on a corrections bill that was of concern to the city's chief judge. There was no legislation passed that got a lot of attention earlier this year to try to prohibit municipalities from employing lobbyists hitting close to home there. And that bill kind of kept getting refined and refined, and ultimately did not go anywhere. Now, we did see kind of a similar piece of legislation that did pass related to firearms that prohibits a municipality from expending state funds for advocating for or against firearm legislation at the federal, state, or local level. Firearms issues are treated a little differently in the legislative process, at least as of late. No one wants the orange postcard that comes during election time. And then finally, there's not been additional discussion of late about taking more money out of the transportation program to fund the budget shortfall. That could be a possibility to try to close this budget gap, depending upon where the House and the Senate come down and the frustration they might get going into Memorial Day weekend. So that's kind of an update on issues of where we're at now, and I'm happy to respond to questions.
One of the other issues that is of interest in Topeka was the enabling of working with Washburn University with the KBI location there. I know that was in the process, and is that still?
I believe it remains active in the budget process.
That's what I understand. It is there as long as it's in the budget, that if the budget is at some point approved, it probably should include that.
Yes. You know, there were efforts that came up on the Senate floor to try to revisit that issue, pull it back, maybe move it down to Forbes Field with a joint Department of Ag, KBI, et cetera, kind of a lab situation. That seems to have not gained any traction, and they're more focused on what they were trying to do at Washburn.
Council members, questions? Anyone have for Mr. Dameron? Thank you very much. Keep going. Win for us.
Hopefully, the next time I'm here, the session will be done. We never know. Thank you again.
That concludes the presentations. We'll proceed with the roll call. This is Clark.
Ms. Hiller?
Here.
Mr. Campos?
Here.
Ms. Ortiz?
Here.
Ms. Everhart?
Here.
Ms. De La Isla?
Here.
Mr. Man speaker?
Here.
Ms. Schwartz?
Here.
Mr. Harmon?
Here.
And Mayor Wolgast?
Here.
And Mrs. De La Isla?
Mayor Wolgast, I would like to request an addition of a noise resolution to the agenda for tonight.
And that would be on the consent agenda. Are there any objections? You received a copy of it here for an event on June 1. Seeing no, yes, Mrs. Ortiz?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does she need to suspend the rules to add this to the consent agenda?
I think if there are no objections.
Yes, there are no objections. You can move forward.
We can, yeah, we can just add it. If there are no objections, this will be added then to the consent agenda, and we will proceed with that.
A is a board appointment. Recommend the appointment of Robert Bausch to the Civil Service Commission to fill an unexpired term ending October 31, 2013. B is approval of workers' compensation settlement for Topeka Police Sergeant Brian Ensley in the amount of $40,386. For injuries sustained while participating in defense training on August 8, 2011, resulting in permanent partial impairment of his whole body. C is approval of workers' compensation settlement for Topeka Police Officer James Wilson in the amount of $55,000 for injuries sustained while on duty on February 15, 2008, resulting in permanent partial impairment of his right ankle and right knee. D are minutes of the regular meeting of May 14, 2013. There is one dance hall license application for Pulse Club located at 4117 Southwest Hutton Street. And the resolution added as item F is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Michelle De La Isla granting Abigail's Grill and Bar an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945150 at seat concerning noise provisions.
That is your pleasure. Mr. Campos has moved to approve the consent agenda. Mrs. De La Isla seconds. All those in favor, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the consent agenda is approved. I would like to introduce Robert Bausch. Stand please, who has been appointed to the Civil Service Commission. I've had the opportunity to meet and visit with him, feel he will do a fine job. Thank you very much. We'll now proceed to new business. The first item is the expenditures. Clark?
A is an ordinance introduced by city manager Jim Coulson, allowing and approving city expenditures for the period of March 30 through April 26, 2013, and enumerating said expenditures therein first and final reading.
Mrs. Ortiz moves approval of the expenditures. Is there a second? Mrs. Everhart seconds. Discussion. All those in favor indicate yes. By voting affirmative, those opposed, vote no.
We have eight yes.
Eight having voted yes, the ordinance for expenditures is approved. Item B is applications.
There's a list of cereal malt beverage applications before you for approval.
If you check those over, and what is your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Mrs. Hiller moves to approve the applications. Mr. Harmon seconds. Discussion. All those in favor, vote yes. Opposed, vote no. I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the applications are approved. Next order of business is the zoning ordinance. Clark?
A is an ordinance introduced by city manager Jim Coulson, amending the district map referred to made a part of the zoning ordinances by Section 1850050 of the Topeka Municipal Code by providing for certain changes in zoning on property located at the rear of 1725 Northwest Topeka Boulevard from R1 Single Family Dwelling District to I-1 Light Industrial District, first reading.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to ask Mr. Fiander to present information on this case.
Thank you. The proposal is for at 1725 Northwest Topeka Boulevard to rezone property from R1 Single Family to I-1 Light Industrial. The rezoning would allow the existing facility to substantially expand their manufacturing sites as well as add additional employment. The property itself is surrounded by light industrial, so this is something very consistent with the comprehensive plan for the area, which looks at commercial industrial as the recommendation. So, planning staff and planning commission have recommended approval. We ask for a motion to approve the ordinance and change the zoning.
Are there questions for Mr. Fiander?
Mr. Campos moves to approve the ordinance. Mrs. Schwartz seconds. Is there discussion? Those voting, vote yes. If you approve, vote no. If you disapprove?
You're the mayor.
I vote yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the zoning ordinance is approved. We're down to miscellaneous items or then presentations by the city manager.
Mayor, I have no presentation this evening.
Okay, where the record continues. I have a couple items I want to mention. First of all, there, I'm distributing here a copy of the ordinance, which states that, go ahead, wait just a second. In the past, we've had the, in the springtime, generally, the, as the city manager provides the city council with their goals and objectives, which we received, and then in that first paragraph, and then the first sentence there, "A, the city council shall establish annual goals and objectives for the city manager on or before May 1 of each year." We have not done that, and I think it's our responsibility that we do that. This is usually, you know, we receive the goals, and then this is the process whereby the council members can address the things they think are important. Many of us were in campaigns, and we talked about issues of the city. This is a process by which the things we believe are important can be presented on to the city manager so that they can be addressed in the budget. So I think that's something that maybe through the deputy mayor, we want to look at, or finding a time that we do this in the, through either the work session or also in the, in a council meeting. And then a second issue that I want to mention, the Policy and Finance Committee is having a meeting next week. I've been aware that we are not receiving monthly reports or any reports on the financial status of the city. In past years, we receive those generally on a monthly basis, and several years ago, the Finance and Policy Committee met monthly to review those, the financial report of the city, and then that also would eventually come to the council if we wanted to have any issues with it. And I think it's particularly important because that's the way we follow the sales tax, because that's the one that is, that changes during the year as issues come along. So I would, I would like to suggest, or that maybe the Policy and Finance Committee in its meeting next week, put this on the agenda so that they receive a financial report from the city. Because I think that's, again, our fiduciary responsibility to be reviewing the income, the basis of the city, so that we know where things are happening before it's too late, and then we have to take action to correct something. So those are the two items that I would mention. Earlier in the Transit Guest Tax Committee meeting, it was mentioned about the situation with the soccer building being built, not following any of the LEED standards, and I realized during the meeting, there's also a fire station being built. And I don't want to, if someone, council member wants to address that issue, but I don't know whether we're looking at any of the LEED standards for the fire station. It's, you know, most cities set the standards of being very environmentally correct. So with that, Mrs. Everhart?
I pass.
Mrs. De La Isla? Mrs. Schwartz?
I always have some business. I didn't have anything for that. I did meet with the Sustainability Committee, and it was very good to meet with them, and there were some questions about the building codes and the possibility of even looking at other cities that have similar sustainability issues with it. So I really enjoyed getting to meet those people. And this last Wednesday, I had a meeting at my home that was for four people with Jackie Russell and a couple others on the health issues and Topeka being an obese city. And it grew to 17 people, and we came up with all these projects and ideas that we could do to address that being in the top 10. So I really appreciate everybody's effort with the city and working with that.
Mr. Harmon?
Well, I wanted to briefly recognize a gentleman named Mike Baumann. And I don't know how many of you met him along the way. I, Mike's, I was at Mike's memorial service last weekend, but Mike was one of the very faithful and active members of the Animal Control Working Group that worked over a period of a couple of years, actually, producing the ordinance that was passed unanimously by the council now about two years ago to update comprehensively our animal control ordinances. Mike was, his role was that he was the, he was the head of the bark park, and so he was very much involved with animals and just knew people all over the city, and in my opinion, but shared by many, many others. Mike was one of the kindest and most thoughtful people I've ever known. And just wanted to share, too, that amongst that group, which still continues to meet, there was a dream there, and that was to get the ordinance in shape and then be part of whatever was needed to make sure that all the enforcement was in order again, and to help get this whole community working together for spay-neuter clinics and education on how to care for animals and so on, with, with an overall goal of collaborating and having Topeka be a community where all animals are safe and healthy and loved. And just, just in recognition of Mike, I personally wanted to make my commitment, and I know many others are there, thousands of others, that, that knew Mike and, and appreciated his contributions to continue working toward that dream. Thank you.
Mr. Campos?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The German Fest is coming up, June 1 and June 2. I like to invite everyone out, of course. And the two mural projects that are starting in Oakland, there is going to be a workshop on June 2, starting at noon, and folks can go to artsconnecttopeka.org to get some more details on that. They're really pretty, so I do encourage people to go online, take a look at them, and it's a, it's a great start for our city. So with that, turn it over to Deputy Mayor.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'd like to announce that there's a JETL meeting tomorrow. And Jenny, what time? Is it 6:00?
6 o'clock.
6:00, okay. 6:00. I know we always get slammed about, is that correct? 5:30?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay, there's a JETL meeting tomorrow at 5:30. I know we always get slammed about not letting the public know. And then also, there's no council meeting next Tuesday due to the holiday. I want to give my letter from Mr. Robert Ellis, I believe we all got a letter, to the city manager. If you will pass that down to him, can you please check that out and get back with us regarding the status of that letter? I wanted the record to reflect that. And also, last but not least, all the kids will be out of school on Friday. So Friday, 11:30, so slow your vehicles down. Slow them down. So anyway, that's, that's all I have, and I just wish everybody a good weekend.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Harmon?
I forgot to announce, the Transit Guest Tax Committee will meet next Tuesday at 5:00 p.m. We will not have a council meeting, but Transit Guest Tax will meet in here at 5:00 p.m.
All right.
Thank you.
We have one person signed up for public comment, Andy Gray. I'm sorry, Andy Fry.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Andy Fry, and I humbly serve on your BikeWays Advisory Committee to the city council. I have joined you previously in asking for your support for the Topeka BikeWays Plan, and later proclaiming last year's Bike Month and Bike to Work Week in Topeka. I ride regularly and encourage others to explore and enjoy what Topeka has to offer by bicycle and beyond. On Thursday, May 16, 2013, at approximately 8:50, 8:50 p.m., I was hit by a 2011 to 13 Dodge Challenger while riding my bike with my friend. My hand was broken from impact with the ground, and my legs got scuffed up. I come tonight to the council to state this is not a reason not to ride. I want to thank previous council members, as well as yourselves, for voting for the BikeWays Plan, as well as supporting bicycling and its community, economic, and healthful benefits. This is but a reason to continue implementing transportation infrastructure that is friendly to bikes, i.e. sharrows, bike lanes, bike ways, as well as to continue the education and public outreach that should accompany this infrastructure equality. Tonight, I'm providing the voice of a bicycle car victim, as well as speaking out for other similar victims. My broken hand and other injuries stand to potentially end my chances of riding the bikes, bike across Kansas in June, hamper my productivity at work as an engineer for several months, and impact the use of my hand more long-term. Luckily, the council and the city has been proactive in pursuing development of bicycle infrastructure issues, and for this, I thank you. The concern of taking care whenever on the roads to be aware and cognizant of other traffic, whether auto, bicycle, traffic, whether auto, bicycle, motorcycle, or otherwise, is an issue that was, that we as a community can address in becoming the bikable and bicycle-friendly community we can be. In summation, I share all these details tonight, not for pity or sympathy, but to congratulate the city on the steps it's taken and help us reconnect to the reason we need a comprehensive network of bike ways for traveling by bicycle throughout the city of Topeka. With such diversified transportation infrastructure, we can better ensure a safe, happy, and healthy future for the Topequins, young and old. Thank you.
Andy, I think I can speak for the council and for the citizens of Topeka. We're sorry this happened, and we certainly support you, what you're saying, and your efforts. Thank you for being here. Mr. Man Speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Has anybody found the individual that hit you?
It was a hit-and-run, and somebody tried to chase him, but they chased the wrong car, so.
Okay.
Not yet.
All right. Thanks, Andy.
I want to stand up.
Thank you. Being no other business, we are adjourned.